Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting this evening. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
There we go. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Carney.
President.
Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Ms. Ward.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now will you all stand and join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we move to adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, excuse me, adopt the agenda without items 4.06 and 4.07, which I would like the board to take up at a later time in a work session.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carney.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? All right, thank you for that. And we now have our agenda. Next, we move on to item two on our agenda, public comments and requests. In accordance with our bylaws, each speaker shall have three minutes. Additional statements can be submitted to the clerk. I have several in hand. If you'd like to fill out a comment form and haven't already, please feel free to do so. Our first person today will be Mr. Daryl Hardy. Welcome.
I'm the seat chair representative and to let you guys know that support staff is here to support the school board and the superintendent for this physical, next fiscal year of our school board budget process. So, we're behind you guys 100 percent.
Thank you very much. On the agenda next for comments, we have Ms. Amanda Blanchard. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Welcome on this slushy, slidey evening. I'm going to reiterate what Daryl said, that the Falls Church City Education Association also supports the proposed budget, and we are willing and able to support you when you pass this and then move on to city council. We've already been in discussions about what that means, how we can help you, please let us know. And if that means standing out in this horrible cold weather at things like farmers markets or other community events, we are happy to be that voice with you. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to the evening.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Allison Kuchma. Welcome, hello.
Thank you, good evening. I think you guys probably know how I feel about the budget. I don't think you should be voting on what I think is a PowerPoint presentation. I think there should be an opportunity for line-by-line program analysis, especially when you have students in our population that are doing so poorly, we need to be looking at why, and I don't, I think we need to be doing it this time of year. And so, I understand from the American Legion Forum, you said we would be doing that after this vote. It wouldn't be the way I would do it, but I look forward to those discussions when you start looking into the special education program and ESOL and why those students are doing so poorly. I'm here this evening about my primary passion, which is special education. When you call 911, what do they say? 911, what's your emergency? They ask you what your problem is. If I go into a store, the clerk comes up to me and they say, "How can I help you?" So, that's just sort of basic communication that says, "I care about what you're saying to me," a basic question. I went to the Special Education Advisory Board meeting on February 4th, and I made a statement in public comment that there are compliance issues right now at George Mason High School, and no one has asked me what they are. That says to me, and the special education community, and other parents, it says that you don't care about those issues. And I know that's not true. And I know, John, I know that's not the message you're trying to send, I absolutely know that. You wouldn't be working for two and a half cents an hour, and it's probably, that's probably not even true, it's probably a stretch, if you didn't, you know, so I know you care, but there, there has to be a basic process in place to communicate that. The ESOL issue, I mean, it's frustrating for staff. And at what point, what failure rate does the ESOL failure rate, like it's 14 percent in some categories, or 29 percent, well below the state standard, where does the failure rate have to be before a school board member will have a private conversation with staff and ask them, "What's going on? How can we help you?" Like 911, "How can we help you?" So, there are compliance issues at the high school, and nobody's asking questions. Please ask Dr. Jones what they are, it's her job to know. Please ask Liz Germer, the Director of Special Ed, what those issues are. If there are no issues, then I'll come back and I'll say, "I was wrong." I'm happy to do that. I, we're human, I can be wrong. You know, it could be just a little procedural error, but you have to care enough to ask. And it's, you know, it's frustrating for staff, you, the whole process, you don't want them to go to Arlington, because you don't want them to leave, right? You want them to stay. Staff are frustrated. ESOL staff are frustrated, special education staff are frustrated. And I know, because I've had personal conversations, because I care about my community and my schools, just like you do. But there's a way to show you care, and it starts by asking questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Victor Wong. Evening, Mr. Wong, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board and members of the school administration. My problem with the budget right now is that we don't have verifiable proof that our teachers are going to Arlington. I hear anecdotal evidence, but I do not see any verifiable proof. I do not see any exit interviews from the school saying that we had 20 teachers, and they're all going to other school districts, in particular Arlington. All I hear is that, "All our teachers are going, they're going to Arlington." Prove it. I also looked at your salary structure, your step increases. I sent a file to Mr. Castillo, who forwarded to Dr. Jones. I have not heard from you about that, and if I looked at your structure, it's a farce. It's ridiculous, and I speak as a professional who does compensation. I've been doing this for over 15 years. I can be kind of, be considered a smee. So, when I look at that, I think it's a joke. I don't believe that you can have a structure where you say, "Oh, you want to hire our people above the structure of Arlington for the first two years, but then you give them 0 percent increase." Of course, they're, of course, the employee's going to fall behind, we give them 0 percent increases. You need to change it. You need to do something about it. But right now, you need to show the community that there is a problem. Not just speak about it, show us verifiable proof. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. All right, any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda on item 3.01. Dr. Jones, I believe you have two childcare requests that you recommend approval?
These were just routine childcare requests, and so, that's why we did not put this in close. They are both two individuals who are on leave right now and are just taking the rest of the school year, which is the practice that we have said we support.
Okay, any, if there are no questions, could I get a motion? Mr. Ankuma? Will you move to it? Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next, we move to the consent agenda. Is there anything else on the consent agenda? Or is that it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Next, item four, 4.01, the Community Input Survey regarding the fiscal year '16 budget. Dr. Jones.
Well, this was an effort, of course, to, to get some information from our community, and I think it, again, we had some great response, and I think the community appreciated the fact that they could weigh in and have a voice, and probably, you know, one of the comments that I heard that, that kind of resonated with me was a parent who has three little kids and says that she can't go to meetings on Saturdays and nights and evenings, and really appreciated just having the opportunity to respond. So, I think doing more of this can be a great tool for us. As you know, in this survey, there were over 1,000 people who actually went to take the survey, but they needed to be a resident in order to continue with the process. So, it was based on city residents. And the primary reason why people selected Falls Church was the school system, and that was very, very strong at over 80 percent, almost 80.5 percent. And the other question that I think we, you know, put on here just to get a feel of the community, "Are you willing to pay more taxes to close the pay gap for the teaching staff and to keep class sizes small?" And again, when we looked at the overall response, we had 57 percent that said yes, we had 21 percent said no, and the 21.6 percent that were not sure. And the, again, as I try to talk to people about, just in general in the survey, on the not sure, I think if we had put an amount, whether it would be 10 percent, or 15 percent, or 5 percent, that would have changed, but $200 versus $1,200, what does that actually mean? So, the ones that were unsure from the comments that I got were just, it depends on how much it is. And on question seven, which is on page five on the lower right, those are just some handwritten numbers to help you tonight as we navigate through. Talking about the high school, and it's 60 years old, and how important do you believe it is to build a new high school? And very important, again, was that that 36 percent, important was 23. So, we are just about 58, 59 percent that are very important are important, and then somewhat important, 22. So, just good feedback for us. And this first section, as you go through all of these, and again, I won't read all of them, I know the school board has had time to review them, but looking at what's important to our community and retaining and recruiting staff was the most important, followed by the curriculum and then class size. And again, I think that's just a, it's great to know what is more important to the, to those who took the survey and responded. And again, we had a good response from our, our community. And where do you get your information? And I think this one, again, was a question that was great for us to know, that especially our school community relies on morning announcements. And, you know, we feel like it's a powerful tool to be able to give our community information, and they said, "Indeed, it is." And the takeaway for me was that, how strong the print version of the Falls Church news press is. And that is a very, very strong communication tool. And as you remember, I think it was maybe the year or two before I started, back in 2009 or 2010, when we stopped because of the economic climate, putting as much in the news press, and that's something I think we need to look at, because it was the number one source for those people who do no longer have children in the system. So, that was just good information. When we get to eight, this is when we started looking at the same data, and we're disaggregated. So, as we looked at community members who have never had children in the system, community members who have had children in our system but do not at the moment, and then we looked at that parent group, and then a student group. And I thought it was nice, some students went on and took the survey as well. And why, why they chose Falls Church for their home, and again, it's the school system, with the exception of the community members who have never had children in the system, and theirs was location, and then followed behind that was the school system. On page 12, again, looking at if they're willing to pay taxes and increase in taxes, and I thought this was a very telling response as well, community members with no children in the schools now, or previously, were 47, 41. So, it's fairly split, but still stronger for a yes. And community members who have had children in the system were the same as the current parents now, which kind of was just another interesting data point, at 57, almost 58 percent. And again, when you look at building a new high school, the one thing that I thought was interesting was some of the responses for community members that have never had children in the system was actually stronger on page 13. So, that's just support, I think, to show that, that commitment to the community and the schools. On page 14, again, where do you get your information? And morning announcements, of course, is high for these groups, and attending meetings, I mean, there's different, when you look at attending meetings, and Mr. Castillo and I had discussed this, that would have been interesting if we had said, "Is it PTA meetings? Is it budget meetings?" You know, what type of meetings? It would be interesting to see, because PTAs are attended very differently in booster clubs than like our meetings are. On page 15 was disaggregated by school site, and this was to get an idea by school site, so that, for instance, on the facilities question, do our parents of younger children think differently than parents of children who are, you know, middle school, high school age? And how long people have lived in Falls Church? That, when you look at the school system as a whole, it's pretty equal across the grades, and when you look at it by school site, of course, you can see there's some differences. Zero to two is that green, and of course, when you think of Jesse Thackrey, they're just, you know, moving into the city and starting their kiddos. And why did you select Falls Church to make your home? And I don't think it's any surprise that the people who have children in our system chose the system, chose to live in Falls Church because of the schools, and on all, at all of our school sites. And on page 21, again, are you willing to pay more taxes to close the gap for teaching staff and to keep class sizes small? And again, when you look at that green bar on page 21, it's yes across the board by school site, which is, again, you know, just interesting to see. And on page 22 is where do you get your information? And this was really to look at, is it different by each school? Is it attending meetings, morning announcements? And again, the, the response rate is very much like it was across the board from the whole community. It's the morning announcements, followed by, the website and Falls Church News Press are fairly close, but those are the informational resources for our families. And then, when you get to the comment section on page 26, I've arranged these comments by theme for you, so that you can have an idea of what they said, and ones that are highlighted in yellow signify a response, which was number one or two. One of the first questions where they could actually log in and log a response was, "What do you value most about our schools? And what would you have liked to have added to the list, something that they value?" And the top two was IB and special education. They would like to have said they value those. Then there were some comments that were, I would say, are the outliers, where people don't really answer the question, but maybe they have a frustration, and they want to use that opportunity to say something different. So, on page 27, at the bottom, these are comments which were outside the question, not about what they value, but something that they might not like, or would like to see different on here. Would pay teachers more? And then behind that was technology, too expensive, focus on hands-on. And it's interesting, that one was one that was split. They either like it, or they don't. On page 29, where do you get your information about the school system? And this was beyond, if you remember, we asked the question, okay, after morning announcements, would take that out of the equation, Twitter and Facebook. And for me, I was surprised Facebook was as strong as it was, but they talked about using the PTA and the, you know, Ed Foundation, just all of the different interactions that happened there. I wasn't as surprised about Twitter, and I was sharing some Twitter, some tweets this week, like even when the weather's bad, our high school kids engage on Twitter and will, you know, ask me to call off school. So, I think it's, some of your children tweet me every once in a while. And it's, it's just become a tool that's so fast and easy for people, and, and I think they are getting some of the information there. And what school-related issues would you like to learn more about? And I don't think that these, on page 30, I don't think this is a shock, why a new high school? Can we renovate? Do we need new construction? There are just lots of interest in the Mason MEH campus. And then, understanding the budget. What are the trade-offs in the budget? What are some of the categories? What are the, what do they mean? What are some, like, they use the word once or twice, cost center, people don't know what those are. And I'm hoping with this new budget, we've taken out some of that financial language and tried to have more narrative on the pages, and we'll continue to get better at that to help people understand the budget. On page 32, this was if they didn't have children currently in the system, and they never had children in the system, and/or never had children in the system, very split. You look at what they would like to have put as a value, and it's everything from IB to music to art, to efficient management, no common core, kind of all over the place. On page 34, again, these are people who no longer have children in the system, and their response, again, Facebook and Twitter. Then they also for comments, understanding the budget, trade-offs, categories, costs, same kind of comments, just trying to get a better awareness of what those mean, of what it means. And that's pretty much it. And the rest were method for getting information, and again, that's kind of the same thing. They'd like more focus on the news press. And I actually think they, when you look at this question throughout the survey data, we got some good response back to think about, looking at better monthly update newsletter from FCCPS. We have our morning newsletter, but doing something monthly. And one of the things somebody suggested, "Why don't you have an email list for non-parents?" We don't want to get all of your stuff, but when you're having something about the budget or referendum that impacts us as a community, I thought that was a great idea. And we did, the other interesting thing for me is that we don't have a lot of people who are watching online FCC TV at all, but I think people have moved to the web. So, it's being responsive, and, and that's just food for thought for Mr. Shields and I both. How can we make sure that FCC TV has a strong web presence? Because that's where people are getting their information, and not necessarily at home on the regular TV channel. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I know the school board got this a little bit earlier to be able to view, but just great feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions? Comments on that? Ms. Carney.
I have a couple of observations. First, Ms. Castillo, thank you for asking that this be done. I think it's helpful for next year, when I'll no longer be in this chair. I might request that we start the effort a little bit earlier and publicize a little bit more broadly in more places, because I wish there had been more feedback from people who don't have their kids in the school. I think that'd be very helpful for us, but I think this is terrific. One, I thought it was interesting throughout here that one of the things people really valued was our extracurriculars for kids, whether it's sports, or music, or arts, or, you know, whatever it was. People clearly appreciate that, and I thought that was great. I'd like to request that this result be communicated to the Planning Commission and the City Council as well. One thing that I continue to be baffled about is that we have a CIP that's been forwarded to City Council that does not include money to continue our work on the George Mason Mary Ellen Henderson Project, when in both the city's survey and this school board's survey, that has been the one capital project that people in the city have said they want to do, and they want to do it soon. And so, I think this data in combination with the data that the city has collected provides a foundation for us to have a meaningful conversation with City Council about why we need money in that CIP this year to continue our work on that project. I know it's long-term and it's complex, but the community has clearly spoken, both to us and City Council, about what they think is important, and it was, and it was that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Other questions or comments? Mr. Ankuma?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, my question is, approximately, what, 3,000 to 4,000 households in the city? Give or take? Maybe less.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look that up.
Yeah, just ballpark, but I'm about, we got about 1,000 responses. Any ideas on how we reach? I'm assuming these would be households. So, if, if, I guess maybe some folks assumed they can send one response per household. I'm just making that assumption, but if that was the case, how do we reach, any ideas on how we reach the other non-respondents safe in the future? I mean, 1,000 is good, but it's, it's only about a third of who's out there, if, if I can generalize. So, how best to reach some, any ideas on lists or, we got to the school population, but what about the others? It's just, it's a, it's a more of a rhetorical question, but, you know.
We, we've talked a lot about that, and I think there are two avenues that we'll be able to grow with, and one is, Mr. Brett and I have talked about using, again, the news press, we know that's where people are looking. They do have an online ad section on their blog that you can actually, on the right-hand side, be able to rent where they put ads. Having, I think, the survey on there, we would have got more response from the community. And, and in addition, I think the city and schools need to be more coordinated in a database, so that we're working closer together. So, when they're surveying, we usually send their things out through morning announcements, because we have 4,500-ish, you know, subscribers, but I think we need to be more coordinated in our efforts and really help one another and make sure that we're using, because their database is different, and people that want the City Council meetings versus morning announcements, we have some different folks.
I know you, you reached that, did you reach out to the city with the eFocus or request the eFocus listener? Do you know if that went out to them, the focus on the eFocus?
They, they sent it out through Twitter. They did not end up distributing it, but through their eFocus distribution. We would like for them to have done that, but they said it was such a small group, they don't have the same robust communication yet. It's growing for them, so they thought their Twitter was more effective, so that's where they sent it out.
Ms. Carney.
Remind me, Dr. Jones, how many people responded to the city's recent CIP survey?
Oh goodness, I think we were around, oh, gosh, I'd have to look, I'm so sorry, I know it's, it's in the hundreds, but it actually got a lot of responses when morning announcements sent out their surveys.
Yeah, I thought it was about 1,000.
Yeah.
I thought it was, yeah, a little south of there.
900. So, we had about the same response to this survey as the city had to the survey that they did about the CIP. Seems like both of us need to work a little harder.
We do. And, but we, I will say, when, when, for instance, on their Parkinson Plan, they only had, they had less than 100 until we sent it out in morning announcements. And that's why I think if we can coordinate our databases, I think we'll, yeah, work together.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, my, my view on these surveys is they are, they're a learning tool, and I, I think we'll get better at them. I think getting deeper reach into the community is important. I think there are various groups that we'd want to talk to about discrete issues, and then I think there are times when we would like to have a more, so comprehensive question. The mechanics of doing it are clearly difficult, and I'd love to hear from anybody about additional ideas. I think it's extremely useful to figure out how people are finding out about things, or not finding out about things for that matter, what they want to learn more about. And getting better feedback is, is going to be a continuous process, I think. I, one of the things I've been thinking about doing next is perhaps sending out a survey, asking about how can we improve, you know, engagement with the schools? What kind of activities would people like to see more of? How can we make things better? But I, I have no fixed ideas about what we should be doing, and I'd welcome some additional input. And I think my, my ideal goal is that we can work with the city and do some combined survey that would, you know, take the temperature of, of people throughout the community at some point as well. So, thank you very much for your hard work on doing this, Dr. Jones. I know it was not easy, and I appreciate your, your hard work and good cheer on that. Next, we have item 4.02, the draft FY '16 school board proposed budget. I'll ask Dr. Jones to comment on, on the changes and the, the insertions that we're going to be having. To preview, we'll be moving next to the approval of, of the submission to the city manager of the FY '16 operating budget. So, we'll let Dr. Jones talk about what, what the updated document looks like, and then, before we vote, we could perhaps go down and get any remarks that people would like to make, and then we'll go ahead and, and vote. So, Dr. Jones.
We do have a brand-new budget format this year, and one of the reasons that we wanted to go with a new format is just trying to be more effective in how we do communicate, so that a layperson doesn't have to understand codes and, you know, Virginia codes, to be able to see where we're spending the money. So, it's laid out very differently, and it has a narrative with almost all of the budget pages, so that you understand when it says purchase services, what does that mean? Because we've had a lot of misunderstanding about what different categories mean, and how much contingency we have, and, and things like that. And so, by adding the narrative, we feel like we're giving the community more information about each of the budgets. When you look on page 10, that's just kind of that overall operating fund, you can get an idea of the community services fund and the school food services fund. The one thing that I would caution people is that this is a working document until the, the school board approves the final budget in, in May. And that is because, even this weekend, one of the reasons you're getting updates is Mr. Kimball was watching what was going on at General Assembly. Not huge tweaks, but we need to tweak the numbers so they're accurate for you. We still may have changes in healthcare, but the rest of the changes should be quite small, unless, of course, once City Council gives us that final number, it could, you know, we could need another tweak and more work on the budget. So, I just caution that when it's online, that's why it says draft, until the school board gets through the process. We've also tried to add some things in here that, questions that we get all of the time, and on like on page 11, "Why are we locally funded? Why does it take so much, you know, money at a local level to fund the budget?" And we've actually, the other question we get all the time, and we've never really put it in print, where, "Who are the nine localities?" People always want to know, "Who else is in the same situation?" People always want to know who else is in the same situation in Virginia, so we've put those in here for you. There's some background on why the school board has done the work that they have. You can see on page 13, regional salary gap. And again, these things weren't in our budget in the past. In the past, we were very numbers and it was a spreadsheet, more Excel spreadsheet-oriented. And kudos to Mr. Kimball and, and Mr. Brett for helping take all of those numbers and try to actually put it in a format where there's, there's more pictures and graphs and more information again, so a person can just understand what's happening in the budget. The other thing I'll just point out in the sections, we've tried to section it off for you to make it easier to read. You can look at it by school. So if you just want to know, okay, what's an overview, you know, for instance, on page 17, why do we have preschool? Well, we get that question a lot and I, I had it just this week where somebody said, why do you have preschool? Why can't we just have put that money in a high school and not have preschool? Well, preschool is special education, special needs. It's mandated for us. That's why we have preschool. So if you read the narrative and that's something somebody had an interest in, they would find that in the narrative. We expect these narratives to get better and better as well and more informative based off the questions that community asks. Then you can look at the staffing. You can actually look at the budget just for that building. It's very easy to see with this format. And you can also look at the enrollment graph, you know, that shows you what's been happening with enrollment. And the next sections that you find in here, it switches a little bit where you're looking at the leadership team. We have people who say, well, how many administrators do you have? What does your leadership team look like? You used to have to go through the whole budget book and try to pick them out. If you didn't really know what you were looking at, you might get one of those incorrect. So we've gone ahead this year and put a central office overview profile as well. And then on page 34, you can see the leadership team. You don't have to go through a whole budget document and try to figure out parts of positions. Again, this is trying to be more transparent based off the questions we're getting. And on page 35, you can see the central office and division-wide staff. Now, a lot of people don't know, like a social worker, where does that show up in the budget? Where does an RTI specialist show up in the budget? Well, those are called central office and division-wide staff. So again, we've tried to break this budget into categories so you can see those different pieces. The other thing I would point out is the Community Services Fund. We are trying to help people understand that section. It's not easy to understand food service and, and how those funds work and so again, we're trying to have more clarity and even the narrative on our food service program, how the school board has made a commitment to all children and making sure that all children, you know, have meals and how we use the Hawaii and Alaska guidelines. If you weren't at one of our budget sessions last year or this year where we talked about that, most people don't know that. So we're trying to put it in here so if somebody has an interest, let's get it in here. Behind that, the other thing you'll find is the category by expenditure. So then you're looking at the big view and that's on page 49. So what do we spend on non-school site administration, system-wide folks? What do, like the school board salaries? So those are in here. What do we spend on instructional expenditures, system-wide? These are again, like those people who rove all over the school division. And you can look at transportation. You can look at security. And again, this is a question that people have been asking. Well, how do I know what you spend on security? How do I know what you spend on transportation? So we've tried to put, we haven't tried, we've done it. We've put them in categories so somebody can say, oh, this is how much to spend on transportation. This is salaries, this is benefits. It's just very, very clear. How much do we spend on insurance? Then behind that, we also have the extra pay for extra duties. And then the other thing we have in here that's new this year are the mandated. And those mandated are like special education. How much do you spend on special education? How much do we spend on ESOL? It's those areas of the budget gifted. How much are we spending on the gifted program? So we've put them in here so it's very transparent again, so that hopefully people will have a better understanding of the budget. We've also put the capital improvements projects in here and we have a lot of people that never looked at that because we presented, you know, back in, I think it was December, it was a separate document, so now we're trying to pull everything into one document that's more comprehensive. The other thing that we want to add in here is our student achievement and we would have had that for you. We are just working like crazy because again, this normally would have been out when I presented in January. You'd have your first draft, but we went with a different process this year to work through all those options. So it would have been in here at that point. So you also have an acronym helper in here and that's thanks to Mr. Lawrence who always wants all the acronyms. We did not forget that this year. So we're hoping this is a much better format for the school board, for the community and we see this as a working document in that we want it to grow and continue to get better and better over the coming years, so.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We should have some sort of contest for missing acronyms. I see E-P-E-D should go on here, so.
Okay.
Gotcha. Any questions? About this. Ms. Carney?
I have just a couple of things. First, I'm going to apologize that I was not able to be at our, excuse me, meeting last week, but I, I just want to go on record that I'm, I'm not in favor of increasing school board salaries at this time. I think it's not appropriate. And that is in this draft budget. I did send a note to Dr. Jones a few days ago and ask her to put a couple of things in here and I, and I know that you haven't had time to do it, but I want for the community's sake, for them to understand that we're going to do that. First, with regard to professional staff salaries, we have gotten some letters. There have been some things in news press. We had Mr. Wong here this evening talking about our professional staff salaries and are, are they really lower or are they not? And so I've asked Dr. Jones to please incorporate in this document the full salary scales for Arlington County as opposed to the City of Falls Church. We have a document that shows that and also shows the specific number of teachers in each lane and on each step so that people can see where our staff actually sit and what they're actually paid and how that compares to Arlington County. And I think people will look at that and frankly be embarrassed at how we pay our teachers. So I think that should be included. The second thing, and I'd like Dr. Jones to speak to a little bit this evening, is I'm absolutely thrilled that we have a section here that lays out what we're spending on the various programs, gifted and talented and ESOL and special ed and so on. I've wanted to see that for, for some time. And I'm just wondering if you can explain a little bit to the community and to the board and to me about how you went about figuring that out because it's complicated. For example, at the high school, how could you figure out gifted and talented since you couldn't just take IB diploma expenditures because more than two-thirds of our kids are in IB program, right? So if you could just talk a little bit about how you sorted through that stuff, that would be helpful to me.
And I'll give a high level and then Mr. Kimball, feel free to jump in. I think that was one thing in the old budget that people didn't understand and why they had so much difficulty understanding the budget because you would have part of a teacher here and part of a teacher here. And that is because that is what we are supposed to do by law, where that's, that's how we are supposed to budget. And if we have an international baccalaureate teacher for the Virginia Department of Education, that, and they teach two of those classes, those are considered gifted for us. If they teach three gen ed classes, general education, those are, those are different and they're categorized differently. So that is what's reflected in here is literally down to the person and, and who's teaching what. Is this a special education para or is this a regular education para? If it's a special education para, they work with special education all day. They are showing up in the special education expenditure. And we've always budgeted that way. I think it was just harder to understand because it was, Mr. Kimball, yeah, it was scattered and that's the way it's supposed to be, but again, we're trying to communicate more effectively by showing people the number. Does that answer?
This starts too.
Okay.
This starts too. Maybe you'll have coffee one day and I'll ask you a few more questions. And then how would you expect that the community would analyze this data that you're presenting?
As in, what do you mean, is this?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think that.
I mean, how would, how would you, how did you want them to kind of think about it? Because I know we have people in the community who say, well, if you look in this survey results, we have both people who say we don't spend enough on gifted and talented.
Right.
And people who say we don't spend enough on special ed.
Right.
And people who say we don't spend enough on ESOL. And so, and we have ESOL kids that are gifted and talented and we have special ed kids that are gifted and talented. We have, I mean, these things all mixed together and it's very complicated. So I just wonder how, how you would think the community would want to think about this new information?
Yeah, and I, this is a section that I think Mr. Kimball and I see it growing tremendously and I think part of it is, for instance, you look at special education and you look at FY14 to FY16 and you have, you know, almost what, 1.5 million in growth. But what has the student enrollment growth been in special education and how does that, how do those two pieces work together? Where, when you look at ESOL and that number is very similar, well, that's because our ESOL numbers have not had the same flux. We would like to dig deeper into this and be able to actually even look at what is the per-student cost on an average special education? We started, we've started that work, but we were not at the point where we felt like we, we want to be really accurate when you put that in here, so we're working on that right now.
Good, that's exactly where I was headed, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Rankuma?
I have a few, not, on page 57, we have positions under review. Could you explain that to me? Wasn't sure what that meant.
Absolutely. The, and let me just find that, just so I know I'm looking at the right thing. Oh, okay. This is, as you know, with Mr. Horn's new position, he's over, he governs all student activities for us and we have a total allocated amount, which is on that top right. That used to, if you had looked at this last year, there were different amounts to each kind of one of these positions. We are in a review right now to make sure that the building actually wants those positions, that they wouldn't want it, and I'm just using this as an example. Let's say a building said, well, we really don't have children who are as interested in chess club, but we have 200 kids who want coding club. So maybe the building wants to take a chess club and make that a coding club. So he's working through that process right now to look at how, how should the stipends be dispersed? Are they the same? Are they different? And what are the demands at each school site instead of just kind of assuming that what we have right now is what we need to stick with? And we've done this before when we did this, even with athletics, I think, two years ago. We actually didn't put the amounts on until we got towards May and we worked through the process because it takes a long time and, and it takes a lot of work with the school sites and the principals and the, the teachers as well.
Okay. And then on page, okay, I don't, I don't think that page is numbered, but under the proposed miscellaneous pay reimbursement tuition rates, student fees, the proposed FY16? It's one of these pages, all right. It is just before 59. I don't think it's, I don't know if it's numbered 58, but.
Let me just see it actually and I can't find it in mine.
And that's just, actually, I just was mentioning, refer to as Cherry Street rather than just that.
Oh, okay, thank you. We'll make that adjustment.
Make that adjustment.
Yeah.
Page, okay, the CIP FY16 Ten Year Master Plan. Right, right after page 59, it says Mount Daniel Occupy October 16. Is that really October 16, not August or something like that?
It is actu, it is October. It is October. That was what was in our RFP and that is because the referendum was in November and nobody would sign a contract unless they had a fair amount of time to complete the building. We are really hoping that Grunley is going to work as hard as they can, the construction team, to get us in before school starts, but we were very transparent about that the whole way through. It's an October move-in. And again, we'll cross our fingers, hope for great weather and that they can get that, you know, six weeks ahead of schedule and they will do everything as possible to try to make that happen.
But if it's October, does that affect, does that affect the transition into the new building and is it, you know, how disruptive will that be?
Yeah, it does and what we will do, it'll depend on a lot of things. Depends on class sizes. How much are we going to grow by then? What's our growth like next year? So how many kids are we talking about the following year? And with second grade, it would mean that you would have to start second grade at TJ and then at what point do you transition? Do you wait and just do that naturally at November? Do you wait and do that at semester because it's better for the children? And that would be a, a big staff decision principle and teachers and what works best for everybody to transition.
Okay.
And that would only be second grade, sorry.
Okay.
Because you could still get first grade out of the trailer, so, yeah.
Okay. And the next page, you've got FCC PS facilities. It's just such a suggestion, but I think as important as it is to show the community that the preschool is mandated by federal, maybe you should bold it or highlight it somehow.
Oh, that it was completed?
No, no, no. Well, you said preschool is mandated by federal law for children with special needs.
Okay.
Maybe that's, you know, as they're reliving through it, they, they realize how important that is.
Okay.
And then a few pages down, let's see, three pages down, second to fifth. You know, can we finally, maybe once and for all, put to bed this notion of either the HVAC being an extra or a cost overrun?
The HVAC is not a cost overrun. The HVAC is, was in the CIP this year and it's planned this year for the HVAC. And the money that we had for Thomas Jefferson that was in the CIP when we opened was what was planned. There was five million and I'm going to say 4.9 off the top of my head that was for the renovation of the old section and the five million was new construction. Of course, new construction had new HVAC. So this is, what, what is in the CIP this year is just to go in and do all of that older section. And we did all the ceiling work and everything as part of that. You just can't build, you can't be in renovating a school over the summer and have all of your paint finishes and stains and, and things happening inside a building and cut off your HVAC. So it, it was very planned and strategic and why we're doing what we're doing.
So.
Not only was it in the CIP this last year, it was known at the time we began the project.
Oh, absolutely.
It was known and well-understood.
My only interest here is to debunk any theories or other rumors going around that were over budget and, you know, the HE, that was not captured. So that was in the CIP. Okay, so, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Sharp? I want to thank my colleagues. They're great questions on the survey and great explanation also on the budget items so far. Last week, there was still an outstanding question or an outstanding uncertainty, I guess, as to how if we did have a pay increase for the board inserted into the budget, whether that would come out as a net increase overall or whether it would, would be subsumed within another category of board service spending. How, how did that work?
We did, it did increase and as Mr. Kimball and I went back over to look at the services component, where you see spikes, it's because we had specific projects and so we went back into the budget. For instance, it was, I think it was the visioning. I'm trying to remember what the big cost drivers were. The visioning and then we had the.
Efficiency study.
Yes, the efficiency study and I believe even this year, our training that we went through with the SBA, you would find in there. So when we've done those big studies, that's what's made it spike. We actually run on a pretty lean budget for the board in terms of what we have for your development. So we felt like we needed to add it.
Anything else?
Yeah. Mr. Kimball, I wonder if you have a reckoning of what the cost per penny is for the tax rate? Is it currently 370,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood?
You know, for back-of-the-envelope planning, Dr. Jones and I have been using about 350, so I think in the 350, 370 range is, is a, is a very good estimate.
Mr. LaConde is right back there.
Ah, there he is. Silently. Thank you for your validation, sir.
Okay. Do I recall correctly that the anticipated zero-budget spending increase was roughly 1.1% increase that the city had, had?
That was, that was the, that was the, the organic growth, the natural growth. Yes, yes, that is correct.
And the amount of the increase that is in this budget is how much, please?
It is, in terms of the city transfer, it is at 5.3%.
And in terms of dollars between 1.1 and 5.3, what's the difference, please?
The difference is, um, it'd be about one and a half million dollars, 1.5 million.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Whittle? Ms. Carney?
What is the amount in this budget that reflects an increase in pay for the school board?
It is approximately $6,800.
Mr. Whittle?
And does this budget include the, the pay step for support administrative staff? And does this budget include the, the pay step for support administrative staff? Okay, sure.
Other questions?
Um, I just had a couple of, uh, there are a couple of small things that I, I'll just pass on to you later. for FY twenty sixteen at ninety-eight thousand. Any, any chance we're going to be like the airline industry and see a big, uh, big payoff there? But, um, on, I think the charts of the school capacity and growth over time are very useful. Is that, was, did that take a, a view of any drop in fuel prices? Um, I, I noticed page twenty-one, some of these things are moving targets. Uh, grades come, grades go.
You know, we have looked at that. I'll tell you, fuel prices, you know, obviously have been volatile throughout the years.
Um, i, if, if it's possible to add a little bit more, say, a marker as to when capacity was added,
Um, also, as has been our usage. Um, and in fact, uh, you know, we may, uh, you know, given our student numbers,
when grades moved, maybe to sort of reflect that a little bit more.
have to have another bus in service so that our usage will actually increase.
Um, I, 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 I think that could be useful for the, uh, community, um, for TJ, MEH, and Mount Daniel.
So there, there are a couple of dynamics at play there. But we, we did drop it slightly between this year and, and next year.
I'm not su, yeah. Okay, thanks. And, Um, just a couple of other issues on the charts with respect to, uh, you know, Mason, so for example, with George Mason, thirty, the capacity for George Mason, uh, back in the, the enrollment and capacity trends. if there would be a way to show the, the sort of capacity lift that we got when eighth grade moved, There's, there's actual capacity listed, and then I think there's also a capacity with, with trailers. that, that could be, um, interesting. Might be good to throw a dotted line in there to show, to show that bump. And I would think online, it would be possible to do some more dynamic things like that that would give people a better sense of, of some of those changes over time. I, I would note that, uh, as, as we look ahead, uh, that the capacity issues at MEH are, are every bit as pressing, if not more so, than what we see at George Mason. Couple of other things here. All right. And then I'll, I'll get some additional minor things to you later. Any other questions about the revised budget num, budget book that the superintendent has brought here? Okay? So with that, we move to the next item, approval of submission to the city manager of the FY sixteen operating budget. Uh, again, this is one of the most important things that we, as a body, do. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, we, we are charged by the Virginia Constitution with, uh, providing high-quality, free education to school-aged children, uh, K through twelve, P K through twelve, for that matter. And we need to take that charge seriously. Uh, we have worked hard on this budget, and now, as we approach the vote on this, just wanted to, uh, go down the, uh, the line here and see if anybody would like to make any remarks before we, uh, move to vote on the budget. So we'll start here with you, Ms. Ward, any?
Can you come back?
Absolutely. Mr. Ankuma.
Um, don't know much to, to add to the budget, except to say that, um, my recommendation would be to stick with the four-year plan for teacher salaries that we started last year. Um, I, I think doing anything else makes it more difficult as we, if we, if we change the plan or we punt or amend what we've done. We've already done one year. I think we stick with that and, uh, keep pushing through and at least get the remaining three years in and do our part for this year. Anything else that I've seen will result in pink slips, which I wouldn't be able to support. So I support the budget as is.
Mr. Lawrence.
Just a, a couple of quick comments. Um, one is to put it in perspective. Two years ago, we, we asked for and got a fourteen point three percent increase. Uh, last year, I believe we asked for nine point nine. We got somewhat less than that, and now we're down to five point three. So I realize that, you know, we've got the CFO for the city sitting in the back, and, you know, no number is ever going to make him smile. But, uh, we are doing, doing what we can to keep the budget, um, both responsible to, you know, our, our role in the city, but also making sure that we're, we're fighting for what the, the kids need, what the teachers need, what the staff needs, and, to be real blunt, what we think is right for the schools. So, um, I just wanted to put it in that context. One thing I think we've really done here is, um, we have listened. We've done surveys, we've all been out to the school, we've been to the central office. Lord knows, having a dog, I, I talk to lots of people and, including members of the audience. And, and I've heard from teachers particularly, who, who feel that we've really listened to them this year. And, you know, you, you don't often get thank you notes. You usually get sort of complaints, and then at the end, or at the beginning, you know, to be fair, you know, thank you for the service, you know, the long hours. I mean, Allison said how, how much we're getting paid. But I, I got one that was nothing but a thank you. It was, thank you for listening. You know, we, we know you can't do everything you want to do, but the fact that you, you value us really made a huge difference. So I, I think the fact, like Michael said, that we're sticking with the four years for the teachers is good. It's not easy, but it's the right thing to do. So I support this budget. Thank you. Oh, and just to get to what Ms. Carney said about the school board salaries and what I said at our work session last week. If we don't get what we asked for from the city, I will move when we adopt our final budget to, uh, to eliminate the school board salary increase. But hopefully, knock on wood, we'll, uh, be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Carney? Mr. Webb.
Uh, just, real quick, just to say that, uh, the work that we've done on this budget, I think we've, we've worked really hard to get to the point that we are tonight. Uh, I am happy that we have come to a point of being able to stay within the four-year plan for, for our teachers and hope to continue to work to make sure that their salaries are competitive in the region. And we'll continue to work to do that. We heard a lot from citizens, and I think the survey that we did this year was a good addition. And I just hope that next year, when we put this survey out, that we'll just do it a little sooner to get a little bit, uh, more feedback from the, from the community about this. But I think the feedback that we did get was, uh, was good to kind of get a sense of what folks in the community are willing to do with, with regard to supporting the school system. Yes, we still have, um, a lot of challenges before us, as, but moving forward now, I think we're at least addressing some of those challenges. Uh, but we do have other areas that we need to just continue to work on and build on of what the ESL community, as well as the special ed community, and just hearing their comments and continuing to work to try to address as many of those issues as we possibly can, uh, to, to show that we, we, we hear them and, and are working towards some type of resolution with that. Uh, with that, I will be, um, supportive of the, the current budget as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Sharp.
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Jones and my colleagues. The, uh, the work up is, is very strong. I, I, I think the, uh, the work with the community was also very good. I, I share Lawrence's concern that, uh, we could start earlier. I think in our neighboring jurisdictions, Arlington and Fairfax, they do have some forums that they conduct in the fall and try to, uh, try to get a, a firm ground of understanding for the, the citizens of what the, what the budget is about and, and how it works. I think it's still, um, we, you know, once you do that, then, then, uh, there is a need to follow up during the budget process. And it, I think we were pretty close in time. Maybe we should have been a bit earlier. Uh, but I think we needed to, to have a point where, uh, we were able to, to convey to the public what it is that our, our priorities were likely to be in the, in the budget as we would get to the end or near the end, so that they could give us feedback. And I think we did that with the questions about, uh, particularly the, uh, how we were dealing with the, uh, the four-year plan and whether people were, uh, supportive of, of providing, uh, more out of their pocketbooks so that, uh, uh, there could be more in the pocketbooks of, of the, uh, the teaching and support staff. And so I, um, I, I, I think the timing was, was, was maybe not ideal, but, uh, but, uh, there was good strategy to it, and I think it came out, came out well. I also, um, you know, I think the city was very cooperative in providing for us very good projections of what they are seeing and, and, uh, and setting out some clear objectives for us. I, I must say, I, I disagree with, with the particular facts that, um, well, uh, I, I'll just say, I think there are additional facts in, beyond the ones that, that the, that the city did encourage us to focus on. And, and I think some of those are, are, are that, uh, as, as John Lawrence pointed out, we have had a declining, um, set of increases that we've been requesting over the past several years. And, uh, our increase would have been much more this year if our enrollment growth had been what we had projected it last year. And so while we were being asked to hold to a, a zero, uh, by the city, I think it was, was very, very unrealistic to expect that, given the two-year timeframe that we had, we had been talking about with the city and what the, what budget increases should have been anticipated, on, on both sides, on, on their side and on, on ours. I, I think there's also, uh, facts about the commitment of the community to the schools that, uh, at least, at least so far, uh, it, it isn't among the facts that the commu, that the city's been asking us to take account. And, and I hope that as we go into a, um, a further discussion with them about what the end, end result of this budget process will be, that we'll have, uh, we'll have a much more detailed discussion about, about the community's commitment, not just to us, uh, on the school side, but also on the city side. I think the city side, uh, also deserves an increase. Uh, and, uh, I think the city, uh, has the capacity to, to fund that increase, even if it means a tax rate increase, uh, on, on property. And, and there, again, I think there, there are some additional facts about why, why that's the case. Uh, if you look at our, um, property values versus property values in the area, uh, and I, I recently confirmed that just the other night with a, a couple who, who have been living, uh, uh, in the, in the, uh, Annandale area, but would like to move into Falls Church. And they, they claim they can't do it because the housing prices are just so much higher within the city than in immediate surroundings. The other, uh, point I would make about, about, uh, the city's capacity to afford is the, the city's experience over more than a decade of growth in income for its households. We have the fastest growth of any community in the area. Faster than Arlington, faster than Fairfax County, faster than McLean, faster than Great Falls. And those are borne out by census statistics, if you care to look at them, since, since the year two thousand. Uh, so I think the city has capacity to afford what's happening. And I'll just point out, uh, what I thought was a good, a good idea that came from our PTAs when we had that joint PTA session, uh, on February eleventh. And the idea that came out was, uh, you know, this next year that's coming up, we, we may have to do something a little bit different in this year than we might otherwise want to do, or that we might do over the long run. And, uh, the, the point that was specifically made was, well, we might have to have a, a tax rate increase this coming year, uh, that, that is a bit higher than we would normally want to see. But then in the, uh, subsequent year, the, and subsequent several years, when we have additional, uh, net revenue from development coming on and, and further increases likely in our, in our other, uh, revenue generating areas, that we could then have, uh, a, a reduction in the rate and, uh, a return to a more normal pattern. So I think that's what, what, uh, what I would suggest is, is supportive of the, um, the budget figure that, that is presented here tonight. Uh, I, I think it's, it's well justified. And, and I, I thank my colleagues for, for, uh, being able to, uh, to hold on to the strategies and, and the values in, in, in spite of, I think, some, some strong pressure to, to move away from them or to, to, uh, to, to reduce the emphasis that we might otherwise have, have been, been wanting to put on them. So I thank them for standing firm and, and, and paying good attention to the strategies and values that we want to, to sustain in this budget. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Uh, I, I would like to also thank, um, my fellow board members, Dr. Jones, and all the professionals and staff who have done so much to contribute to the discussion here and to work hard, and I think to bring us, uh, as far along as possible with respect to understanding, what do we need and what should we do to meet those needs? With respect to the budget process, uh, community communication about the budget, uh, I, I agree that we should start earlier. Uh, this past year, we raised that prospect with, uh, representatives of the city council, and we'll do it again this next year, um, so that we can get this process going sooner, we can educate the community on the issues that we confront, and we can move ahead. My hope is, in the September timeframe, to start laying out, um, you know, the inputs to the budget that then result in the draft budget in, in January. There are, with, with schools, there, there are sort of seasons. We're in budget season now. In the summer, I think we should take the opportunity to take the information that we glean from tests, from the end of the school year, from other inputs, and build on the information gathering that goes on throughout the year to figure out where we're, where we're doing well, where we need to improve, based on those inputs. And that will dovetail nicely with the, uh, September budget process. But I, I, I urge, um, everyone in the community interested in this, as well as, uh, the city council, to, to really look at how we can make a more holistic budget approach, uh, starting with some of this earlier discussion, which I think has a lot of support, both up here and in the community at large. With respect to this budget, it's, it's a very simple budget in terms of what's driving it. There's the salary component, which is the vast bulk of, of what is, is resulting in the increase. There are structural issues, mandates, inflation, healthcare cost increases. And there is growth in the student enrollment, which while smaller than anticipated, was still real and which frankly, I, I think the community needs to understand, barring some very unforeseen demographic quirk, is going to return to, to a higher number than, uh, you know, our, our neighboring jurisdictions saw. the budget that then result in the draft budget in January. There are, with schools, there are sort of seasons. We're in budget season now. In the summer, I think we should take the opportunity to take the information that we glean from tests, from the end of the school year, from other inputs, and build on the information gathering that goes on throughout the year to figure out where we're doing well, where we need to improve, based on those inputs. And that will dovetail nicely with the September budget process. But I urge everyone in the community interested in this, as well as the city council, to really look at how we can make a more holistic budget approach, starting with some of this earlier discussion, which I think has a lot of support, both up here and in the community at large. With respect to this budget, it's a very simple budget in terms of what's driving it. There's the salary component, which is the vast bulk of what is resulting in the increase. There are structural issues, mandates, inflation, healthcare cost increases. And there is growth in student enrollment, which, while smaller than anticipated, was still real, and which frankly, I think the community needs to understand, barring some very unforeseen demographic quirk, is going to return to a higher number than, you know, our neighboring jurisdictions saw numbers north of 5 percent. I think that's a very real possibility. Time will tell. I think one of the lessons that we can also learn from neighboring jurisdictions is that it's much easier to stay in place than it is to catch up. I think we're working hard to avoid that syndrome, because once you dig a sufficiently deep hole, it's very difficult then to fill that hole back up. I think we've got enrollment challenges, but I think we've got a lot of great opportunities. I think we're working hard to develop new and innovative ways to provide a wide array of educational opportunities for everybody in the school system. I think we're working very hard, too, to make sure that those are working throughout the year. And I think we have a strong school system, and the problems and challenges that we face are the right ones. We don't have declining enrollments, we're not looking at closing schools. And so I think we need to remind ourselves of that. So with that, I will ask for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Ward, I completely forgot. You get the last word.
So my comments on this year's budget, first, I'd like to address the increase in stipend for the school board members. Well, I understand the reasoning for the request to attract more people to these positions. I can say, I think with complete sincerity and accuracy, that everyone sitting on this board right now is certainly not doing it for any kind of income. We all are here because we care about our students, we care about our schools, we live in this community because we care about the schools here. So if anything did have to go, even though it's not much money, certainly that should be the first thing that comes out of the budget, depending on what city council ends up doing. And I believe that our obligation to our students, to our schools, we, I think, during this budget process, we have focused on our students, providing them with a high-quality education, which includes paying our teachers what they deserve, what they are worth. And given the increase in enrollment and the aging facilities, this budget, to me, is extremely reasonable for what we're asking. So I wholeheartedly approve this budget. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Whitzel, you get the last last word.
Wow, honor. Just to start, I do think that there's been, sorry, some excellent communication between the community and the school board. I was very impressed by, you know, all the steps they're taking and your taking. And just, you know, I think it's coming along great. I think, though, we do have more moves to make. And I do agree that visioning, some kind of face-to-face forums are a productive way to do that. I also think that it is essential to get more information of the opinions of people who do not have children in this district or who have children that have grown and left the public school systems. And so I think that'll be important in the coming year to address. I think that what I've seen of the survey does support our budget as of now, and I think that's an important, you know, thing to realize, that we do have the community's support in what we're doing. And as a student myself, I believe that the students would be completely supportive as a whole of the steps we're taking to increase teacher salary and be supportive of the budget holistically. And so I think that this is, you know, a great step, and we need to continue with the next few years in the four-year plan, but we're doing what's really important for the school district, and I think it's a great, you know, budget to see for that, for maintaining excellent schools. So I'd like to congratulate all of you and all the people who also worked on it, on the administrative staff, for all your hard work.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whitzel. So with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Chairman, I remember the school board approved submission to the city manager proposed 15-2016 operating fund budget in the amount of $46,718,400, which requires a city appropriation of $38,693,900.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kimball, would you call the role?
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on now to item 4.04, approval of submission to the city manager of the fiscal year 16 food service budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve for submission to the city manager the proposed 2015-2016 food service budget with receipts and disbursements in the amount of $988,700.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carney. Mr. Kimball, would you call the role on this?
With pleasure. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving to item 4.05 on the agenda, approval of submission to city manager of the fiscal year 16 community services budget.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve for submission to the city manager the proposed 2015-2016 community services fund budget in the amount of $1,831,100, requiring a total city appropriation of $119,200.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Kim.
Very good. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much again for all your hard work and assistance. We move now to item five on the agenda, board and student liaison comments. Mr. Whitzel.
You're not, you're not prepared. So when we first began the budget process, I was kind of overwhelmed by all the charts and graphs and all the data, but I've been really impressed by just how well, you know, and professionally with this acute, you know, understanding that you all handle the information. Then it gives me a little bit of confidence to be able to place it into your hands as a community member myself. But with the help of, I begin to understand the issues and kind of solve the puzzle of the budget, and really pleased to see the way the budget has reached out to the, sorry, the school board has reached out to the community in all the different ways it has. I believe the budget really does succeed in maintaining great schools and rewarding those who work hard at maintaining them themselves, our excellent teachers and staff. And though we are not finished with raising the teacher's salary, the year's budget takes an important step into accomplishing that goals. And despite the excellence of the budget, I do think that there's one area we can improve, and that's, you know, in communicating more efficiently with students about the problem, because the budget is so focused on maintaining great schools for our students, I believe that it's important to also have a little bit of perspective in which I take full responsibility, and I believe that it's a task for a student representative and the new oncoming one of the next year. I plan to try to make a more, a better plan of trying to handle this issue, including more representatives in the issue, and also trying to get more information on student opinion by working together with the next elected representative on trying to handle it for the upcoming year. I welcome any suggestions to better, to best integrate the students into the process, and hope just that in the next year, we'll be able to see a budget process that really integrates students to the level that we've been able to successfully integrate the community in this year. And so, thank you so much for this excellent learning experience.
Well, we're not done with you yet, so.
Oh, yeah.
But thank you for your persistence and your contributions, and, you know, we're putting ourselves in your hands eventually, so we're, I'm glad to see that we're choosing wisely and that you'll do well by us in our golden years. Okay, Ms. Ward.
So I haven't had an athletic boosters meeting since our last meeting, when I reported, but I will update you on what's going on with sports. Tonight, as you all probably know, the boys' basketball team were playing in the regional playoffs. Unfortunately, I got a text, they lost by 12 to Brunswick, a very formidable opponent. It was a, I got to see, Dr. Jones and I were there for the first half of the game. It was an excellent game, very well played. Last night also is the winter sports banquet, and I don't want to disrespect anyone by naming only a few sports, because I don't remember, there are so many awards, and we have such wonderful athletes at this tiny school. I'm so impressed with the number of students that have made it to states in all the winter sports. I do want to point out, though, and I'm not prejudiced with basketball, but I do want to point out that we did have some really noted awards for two of our basketball players on the boys' team. Robert Tartt, who's a junior at George Mason, he was appointed the all, I have to say, I have to read this, All Bull Run District Boys Basketball Player of the Year. And that's a pretty impressive award, especially for a junior. The other one I want to mention is girls' basketball. Many of you know Katie Goodwin, she scored her well over a thousandth career point in her years of playing girls' basketball at Mason. So I just wanted to point out those two kids, and really, truthfully, all the kids, they're just incredible, and I don't know what else to say about them. I'm gonna gush, I could gush and gush about these students for a long time, but I won't because I know everybody wants to go home. So, I'm done. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma.
Nothing much to report. I guess I'm looking forward to my first peak and GT meetings. Those are coming up shortly, so I'll report then. I believe this week, we have something with the Mason High School with the international dinner.
International dinner dinner night.
Right, so we'll report back on that, and there's been no chamber meetings since our last report, so that's my report.
Mr. Lawrence.
Like everyone else, most everything has been canceled for one reason or another. Yeah, really, just for one reason. So very little to report, except the one thing I forgot to say in the budget was, special thanks to both Tony and Hunter for doing everything with the numbers, for Marty for sitting with us night after night, morning after morning, weekend morning after weekend morning, as well as John Brett, and, you know, Rick Jowers is gone, and Lisa, you're always here, smiling. So, thank you, and on behalf of my wife and my son, thank you to all of our families as well for putting up with all the, and my dog for putting up with us doing this night after night. So, thank you, and looking forward to keep doing this.
Ms. Carney.
I would simply say for the community that we voted this evening on our budget recommendation to city council, but it's not yet over. There's a lot of work to do between now and when we adopt our final budget. Please keep your eye on the budget calendar. I know there's a town hall meeting coming up on Saturday, the 14th of March, where Dr. Jones and our chairman will be talking about our budget. Please attend and ask your questions. Prior Tuesday night, I believe, our budget will be presented to city council, along with the general government budget. Please come to these chambers and watch that, and just stay engaged and involved, because there's a lot to go, both on the CIP side and the operating side before it's all over.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
As everyone else, most meetings have been canceled, postponed because of the weather, and I suspect Dr. Jones is watching the weather for Thursday. My office is taking bets of whether we're gonna get a delay or we're keeping our fingers crossed for a whole day off.
A day off.
Yeah, but, again, I want to definitely thank the staff for all the hard work that they have put forward in this budget of trying to make it more accommodating to, for everyone, including myself, of understanding the components and making it easier for our, for the community to definitely be a little bit more involved in it with the community survey. Also, just wanted to, again, work with, being that we've kind of slowed down a little bit on this part of it, and as we focus on getting the final pieces of it with the city council, that we continue to reach out and work with them as we move forward over the next month or so, with hopefully buddying up and being in touch with some of our city council colleagues to shepherd this budget through. If we pass it and believe in it, we need to continue that work that we have begun tonight, of making sure that it moves forward across on the, with the city side. Then also just follow Dr. Jones and just make, work with you a little bit on that date to hopefully get the First Lady to come to our schools and maybe have lunch with our kids at one of the schools since, from that award we brought much yet. But again, thank you all for all you did, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Sharp.
A couple of announcements. Thursday, March 19, the Fairfax Partnership for Youth will have its annual reception, silent auction. Typically, the silent auction items emphasize artworks, but there are a variety of items that I expect to be there, including a trip on safari, which we've had in the past, been very popular. If anyone would like to attend, appreciate if you'd get in touch with me or check on the Partnership for Youth website, which is fairfaxyouth.org. And of course, donations of the silent auction items, as well as people coming and enjoying the event is greatly appreciated. For one of the groups that has partnered with the partnership on mental health, particularly suicide prevention activities, the Josh Anderson Foundation, they have their fundraiser, at least one of their biggest of the year, on March the 14th. So run fast in the, what you may all know as the Rock and Roll Marathon. It's an annual event. They have marathon, half marathon, and 5K, and you can support any number of different worthy nonprofit groups by going onto the Rock and Roll Marathon website. But I would especially recommend the Josh Anderson Foundation, they recently sponsored for this area, a suicide prevention conference, particularly involving a sort of peer-to-peer discussion among teens. The Chamber of Commerce has their gala on March 21 at the Weston. I think there may have been some misunderstanding about when that was going to be, I think in our notes over the weekend, it was indicated as March 6, but it is March 21. I'll be away unfortunately, but, because I always enjoy that gala, but I'll also be enjoying being in Nashville for the National School Boards Association Convention. And for our upcoming meeting, I hope we'll have a chance to discuss some of the safety items that were deferred from this meeting. But in line with that, I also hope we'll have a chance to discuss the Health Advisory Committee, which we've been kind of holding on the back burner for quite a long time. And Zach, I'll ask you if you would think about perhaps some additional people who may be interested in a larger effort in that area. I think we have, and I'll thank you for recruiting some folks who were interested in the family life education area, and I think that they may be part of the larger health committee, once that's formed. But I think there may be some additional interest that we'd like to reflect if that's out there for a health advisory. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I would like to say that I went to the Little Mermaid last Saturday night, and with no rehearsal between and with no rehearsal between the canceled show and the show on Saturday night, they did an amazing job. They was, I don't know whether it was muscle memory or they were just, they'd rehearsed so much, but the costumes, the choreography, the music, the sound system, it was all great. And so congratulations to the kids and to Ms. Piscopo, who always knows how to do a great show. Weather notwithstanding, the calendar for Thursday, Mr. Lawrence reminds me, has at 7:30 the FCCPS Celebration of Visionaries, including the 40th Anniversary of Daycare. That'll be at MEH. Tomorrow night is the International Dinner, knock on wood. And that's all I have for now. And thanks again to everybody for a very collegial and hard-working time. Ms. Ward, pile on. Go ahead.
I forgot to mention, I wanted to mention also last night at the sports ceremony, the award ceremony, many of you know Janice Nettie. She is stepping down as coach for the swim team. She's the one who started the program a few years back, and I just wanted to recognize her for the hard work that she's done in building this swim team program. And we're just very, we're blessed to have people like that in our community and in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now we come to the next item on the agenda, the closed meeting. Could somebody get us to a closed meeting, please?